You can put the wheels on facing the other way. I like it this way. The plastic sticking out a bit gives it a little more room. So it doesn't rub up against our axle cleat. All right. Should tighten these up. The term recycle or repurpose materials is used so much, but in this case it's very relevant. This whole project was made out of pieces I had left over from previous projects. The three quarter inch pine I had, you know, taken from another project. The half inch plywood was taken from another project. The only thing I had to buy was the threaded rod for the axle and the wheels. A simple piece of angle iron acts as a great support to the cart. We have our partitions here, our cubbies made to hold our seeds in place. We've attached our leather pieces to act as stirrups to hold our broom or rake poles in place. Here we've attached the leather for tool handles. Now you could leave this open. I made a door for this one as well. Think that works great. All right. If you're keeping this in the shed, you can leave it unfinished. I think I'm going to paint this one the color of my old tractor. There you have it. As usual, I had a blast building this project with you. I hope you come back, see us here in the garage. You can use something. No, stop, stop, stop. Where who, where Steve go? What's going on?
Measles still causes deaths around the world. In 2019, we had globally the most reported measles cases in 23 years.
One of our constant challenges with measles is that you have to be relentless in vaccinating children. We need 95% vaccine coverage with two doses of measles vaccine.
Since the COVID pandemic has started, we saw big decreases in immunizations. We've also seen interruptions in measles surveillance. So the number of reported cases has dropped in 2020.
One of the things that we've been able to do is to better estimate where our immunity gaps are in populations. To be much more focused on early detection and a quicker response to measles outbreaks. We've got a great vaccine. It's been in use for 50 years.
And all we need to do is provide two doses of vaccine to children everywhere and we can eliminate measles.
Give me the thumbs up when you're ready.
Okay.
Testing, can you hear me?
Chiana said she was going to be late, I'm sorry.
Ready? All right. Counting in and five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the Tuesday, January 11th, 2022 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will shift to correspondence and I will turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you. Following correspondence was received by the school committee. A memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of CTEC dated December 28th, 2021, regarding the Walter E. Quigley Junior Student of the Month awards for December 2021. The Long Meadow students honored were Gage Burns for building and property maintenance and Jack Bellevue for help assisting too. Emails from the following individuals regarding COVID-19 and LPS protocols. On December 12th, Gary and Kathy Proventure. On December 14th, two emails. December 15th and December 17th, Jessica Kelly. On December 14th, Anna Circo Gruel. On December 17th, Margaret Rakus. And on January 5th, Lauren Brady.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up, we have approval of minutes and there is a possible motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the December 14th, 2021 school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right. Next up, we have visitor comments. And just a reminder, like we always do, visitor comments. You have one shot and you get a max of three minutes. And as a reminder, make sure that you're speaking to the chair, to the committee, not speaking to other members. Yeah. And again, the easiest thing to do is to raise your hand using the Zoom raise hand function like Bernadette has just done. Or you can show your video, raise your hand, and we will recognize you. So we will start off with Bernadette. Bernadette, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Bernadette DeNervin, 118 Blueberry Hill Road. So I'm speaking tonight with a question of what's next. I ask this while acknowledging that DESI has extended their mask mandate until late February. But as a mom to four young boys and a stakeholder, as you all like to point out, what is Long Meadow's path forward once DESI eventually leaves decisions to local districts? Once DESI leaves decisions, decision making to local communities, how would this committee justify continuing to make medical decisions on behalf of my children? At that point, there will be an acknowledgement of no emergency and a burden of proof for all of you will certainly be significant. In that vein, I would like to point out that Mr. Shea plugging an emergency use vaccine for my healthy young children while not being their parent is one that certainly feels unnecessary and like an overreach to me. As a reminder, the role of this committee is to help make decisions for the education of our children, not to make or influence personal health choices. The lines have certainly blurred over the last 22 months. The committee and district talk a lot about social and emotional health. And I can tell you that for the two of my four children I have reluctantly entrusted to your care, it is suffering now more than ever. This doubling down of mitigation efforts in the schools since the holidays is draining them and taking a toll. Assigned seats at lunch, gym class held inside a personal taped off spot on the floor. Anxious adults constantly, constantly reminding them about masks, procedures, three feet, rules, health, safety, et cetera. Sterile, rule-filled schools are taking away the last shreds of socialization for them and it is not fair. What is the plan for a full return to normalcy? Families like mine who approach life with a rational understanding of risk have paid our dues. Our children have paid their dues. Teachers and parents who feel that their health and well-being are protected by my child wearing a mask are wrong. And it would be helpful if our local health officials reflected on the risk reward benefit of this policy before the end of February. The CDC mask study that Dr. Tapper referenced in the last two meetings serves only as a confirmation of bias. The study did not have a control group. There's no info on the study for the actual number of cases or number of kids in the schools and no info on the testing inside the communities. How is it that my two youngest children attend a mask optional school 3.4 miles away from Long Meadow and have not been involved in an outbreak thus far? There are no vaccine mandates at PVC, no spacing requirements and larger class sizes. And everyone is happy and thriving. Half of the country is currently mask optional. Why is this always overlooked in your discussions? This obsession with masks has been the largest public health failure of this pandemic. Dr. O'Shea has assured me personally that masking is a temporary.
Bernadette, if you could wrap it up, it's over three minutes. Thank you.
Absolutely, I'm getting there, thank you. Dr. O'Shea has assured me that masking is a temporary intervention at LPS. How exactly is that going to happen when we continue to perpetually elevate the importance of masks as our primary mitigation? Will you provide education on the risks of COVID for the general population and counseling service for anxious, fearful adults when our district finally returns to normal? Parents like me have a big decision looming in mid-March. Private schools are looking for commitments at that time. We won't be blindsided by this committee and administration in August again. Tell us how and when Long Meadow returns to normal. So many adults have forced our children to sacrifice so much of their childhoods to protect them, the grownups, and to assuage anxieties. It's time for the adults in Long Meadow to become resilient and for the kids to be kids again. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. Anyone else who would like to make a comment? Jessica, you're up.
Hi, my name's Jessica Kelly and I live at 37 South Ave. So I also was wondering, I've sent emails and I've asked you guys some questions and I don't know if you thought they were rhetorical, but you never respond. So I guess I'm going to just ask them again here and hopefully you'll answer them. I am very curious because the test and stay data showed that asymptomatic kids who are being tested every day for five days so they can remain in school, that's not bringing up any positive results. So I would think that you'd be concluding at this point that asymptomatic kids who are close contacts are probably not a risk to anybody. And maybe we can cut it out with the constant testing requirements. So that's, but then instead you guys decided that you were going to try to expand the use of the test and stay protocol. So that's just something I want to understand better because I don't follow the logic there. Another thing I wanted to point out is that this school committee is relying on a doctor consultant expert, Dr. Tapper, to inform your decisions. But I've pointed out to you at least twice now, like times where she's deliberately or I don't know if she's, just doesn't understand, but she's been very misleading with her use of data and articles to support mask mandates. One of those situations I find egregious because it actually like affects my son and his situation. But she cited an article from HealthyChildren.org and said the AAP said in that article that they've done plenty of studies and they know that masking doesn't have any negative effects on the development or development or social development of young kids. But the article actually just said that there are no studies showing there are negative effects. So basically the article was saying they don't know anything because they've never studied it. That's not evidence that it doesn't harm kids. That's just evidence that they've never looked into it. So I don't know why that would be relied on as evidence that it's okay to mask children all day. And I've also noticed that Dr. Tapper frequently exaggerates the number of kids who are hospitalized. And I sent you the data after the last meeting that showed that there were actually 12 in the state, 12 kids in the state that were hospitalized at that point. Now it's a little more, but now we also know for sure that those hospitalizations and kids are not being separated by whether they're there because they have COVID or they just happen to have COVID and they're there for something else. So I don't really, I want to understand the motivation because it sounds like you guys are manipulating the data and the actual information to support doing things that are bad and wrong and don't make sense. So please explain why we're all pretending that that data makes sense and that it's not essentially a lie that you're relying on. And I guess that's it. I don't really know what else to say, but I just don't. Is there a better way to get ahold of you than email? Because I, it's, it's hard to not get answers when I ask these questions at times that aren't at school committee meetings.
Thank you, Jessica. Next up is Katie.
You guys hear me okay? Okay, I'm going to talk fast as I always do. I was told that I sound crazy when I talk fast, that I have a lot to say. So first of all, I would like to bring your attention again to these Zoom meetings. They are absolutely ridiculous. I'm sure you're all eating at restaurants and going out in public, other towns or in person and hiding behind a computer is not acceptable. I understand that DESI has further extended their mask mandate in schools, but I have to say their decision is not based on science and is absolutely unacceptable. Every single one of you should be sitting back questioning their intentions. Masks do not work. I understand COVID is rampant right now, but it would be with or without the masks. As reported by Mass Live today, top Massachusetts officials are opposed to a universal mask mandate, but yet somehow they think it's okay to mask our least vulnerable group. We have seen reports from the state of New York and others that over 40% of hospitalized patients are in the hospital with COVID, not from it. This means that a person could be coming in, was hit by a car, and they are counted as a COVID hospitalization. This was also stated by the Long Meadow Board of Health Director at the meeting this past Tuesday regarding hospitalizations here. We are beyond a point where things need to change. These kids have not seen smiles in over two years and are losing valuable learning opportunities because they are forced to cover their face with a piece of cloth that does nothing to protect them and don't even think about requiring better masks because I will not further suffocate my child. When do things get back to normal for them? You are doing more harm to these children by following these mandates than COVID would. Children are not at risk of severe disease from COVID and this is a fact. The doctors you have guiding you in this group have made many uninformed statements about risk to children. One mentioned a few weeks ago that masks are a good idea and there are no studies showing that they have any negative effects. Besides the fact that masks are a breeding ground for bacteria, mentally we see vast increases in depression, drug use and suicide. If you think masks are so medically important in stopping such a horrible disease, why don't we see hazmat trashcans around school and in town? Another reference was made to a study conducted that claimed that schools were three times more likely to contract, I mean, sorry, unmasked children in schools were three times more likely to contract COVID than those who are masked in school. This study was shared by the CDC, but if you actually read it, you will see it leaves out some very important facts. The study was conducted in Arizona over the summer and published by the CDC's Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report. It found that schools and counties with mask mandates had 3.5 times more outbreaks, sorry, without mask mandates, had 3.5 times more outbreaks than schools and counties with mandates. It turns out there were numerous problems with that study. Many of the schools that comprised its data weren't even set to open at the time the study was completed. It counted outbreaks instead of cases, did not control for vaccination status and included schools that did not fit criteria. These are our so-called health experts making these claims. The fact that DESI still stands behind their 80% vaccination mask policy should also be nullified at this point. Vaccines do not stop spread of COVID. I'm embarrassed to live in a state that follows such arbitrary rules. The fact that vaccines do not stop spread coupled with the fact that children are never and were never.
Katie, Katie, if you can finish up, thank you.
I'm almost done. Children were never and are never at risk for severe risk from COVID. We are doing more harm to them. We, the parents, demand that you take action and fight for what is right for these kids. That is what you are elected to do. I'm sick of people telling me they agree with all I stand for but cannot speak because they will lose their friends or their jobs. Either stand for something or stand for nothing. If you are too scared to fight back and speak out, then you should tender your resignation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else who would like to comment? All right. Seeing none, we will move on the agenda. Next up is school committee announcements and recognitions. Anybody have any announcements or recognitions? Mary, go ahead.
I attended the Long Meadow High School PAC meeting this morning and Shelley Warren was the guest speaker. She's excellent and it was a wonderful meeting with about just under 20 participants. So just wanted to let everyone know that I was grateful to be able to participate.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate the update. Anyone else? Bronwyn, go ahead.
Oh, thanks, Kevin. I just wanted to, I guess, remind everybody, I don't, I don't think it gets out there a lot, that right now DESI is mandating certain things. And those certain things are out of our control. Whether or not people on the committee are agree or disagree with DESI, unfortunately, doesn't matter because we have to follow their guidelines. When they did implement the 80% vaccination requirement, we did vote for the high school to do that. They did it for a while when cases went back up. Dr. O'Shea wanted to get right on it and make sure things didn't get any worse. I'm looking forward to, hopefully soon, that that goes back into place, that if students and faculty choose to remove their masks, the high school will become mask optional again. But if DESI doesn't provide us with that, that option, it's just not something that we can override. Thanks.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Anyone else? All right. We will continue to move along. So our next item is business with guests. And we have a vision of the graduate update. So I will turn that over to Marty to introduce our guests.
All right, thank you, Kevin. So as part of the school committee goals this year, you had hoped to hear from various schools on sort of the ways that the vision of the graduate is illustrated in the work that students and teachers are doing throughout the year. So this is the first in a series of visits from our schools. And tonight, Principal Tom Lenders from Long Meadow High School is with us. And he'll have some opening comments for you. And then Tom will let me know when we're ready to queue up a video that he, he and his staff have prepared for you tonight. Go ahead, Tom, are you muted right now?
Thanks, Marty. Everybody, Happy New Year, good to see you all. And as Marty said, I know that we wanted, one of the goals is to kind of showcase what, what's going on in our, in the, in the schools. And we certainly want to showcase what we're doing with the vision of the graduate. So I want to acknowledge four people tonight. Michael Framrin, biology and chemistry teacher, and Meredith Laughlin, math teacher and department chairperson. They're our co-coordinators for the NIASK visit. And Deb Callahan and Betsy Mitchell, two art teachers who made this video tonight. So what we wanted to do was just to quickly showcase kind of what, what kinds of things were going on at Long Meadow High School. So there's a short video clip, four minutes or so. And the thought was to kind of capture between late October and early December, the kinds of things that were going on. So you're going to see a social studies teacher, you're going to see a physics teacher, you're going to see some introduction to engineering students work. You're going to see community service learning students work on a project. You're going to see some work that the art students were working on. And again, we started the vision of the graduate work two years ago. That, as you know, that involved, you know, creating it and surveying stakeholders and making sure we were being democratic and inclusive. That gave way to last year. Last year, we certainly introduced it and advertised it, but last year was filled with all kinds of challenges. So this year's, this, this semester, this first semester's charge was to kind of put it into high gear, advertise it, be really intentional when, when we're in classrooms, we're in front of parents and families. And hopefully this video shows it. So again, it's a quick clip of, it's called Living the VOG. And I want to thank the art department for putting, putting it together.
All right, thank you, Tom. So let me do a screen share here and hopefully the video connection cooperates. And if folks at home, if you can just maybe let me know with a thumbs up that you're able to hear the video. So let's see. All right, so Tom, give me a thumbs up if you're able to hear it once I get it rolling, okay?
Hi, I'm Hannah Tyler.
I'm Margaret O'Connor.
And I'm Olivia Dupont. We're all seniors at LHS.
Our project was to make four picnic tables so there's more seats available for the students.
As you can see, we accomplished Long Meadow High School's vision of the graduate. We were accountable for making sure we saw this project through to the end and independent by personally going over every single aspect of the project itself.
We touched upon problem solving when we had to find replacement words and critical thinking when we were figuring out how to move all of our materials.
Finally, we worked on our collaboration skills by making a plan on who would be responsible for each task.
Hey, I'm Nikki. I'm here to talk to you about the vision of the graduate. For our application of the vision of the graduate, we were tasked with making a better fan blade than this one. Wait a second. Than this one. During this project, we were all accountable because we all kept up with our work. We never missed a deadline and we worked together as a team.
We were independent because we each came up with our own ideas for what we thought would be the most efficient fan blade design.
We use problem solving to correct problems in the original fan to make the best fan possible.
With critical thinking as the vision of the graduate, we use critical thinking first to think of the aspects of the fan blade that would matter most, such as the size of the blades and the number of the blades. Then we also use our critical thinking to decide which team members' design would work the best and who would have the most efficient.
For the communication and collaboration aspect of the vision of the graduate, we use communication and collaboration to work together as a team.
To decide what would work the best.
And what wouldn't work. Make the best design possible.
The Mars project relates to collaboration because we are working together to compile information to ensure.
By collaborating with a partner and cooperating with other groups, we were able to figure out a strategy to find the dimensions and angular speed of a spinning space station.
Overall, in this design process, we displayed our problem solving abilities and explored a fascinating and expanding application of physics.
Did you know much about the vision of the graduate before this hall pass project?
I didn't know much about this project. This project definitely worked for us a lot. It's going to make some sense if the high school has criteria.
After leaving this class, my T C teacher was talking about the vision of the graduate. I already had a head start in knowing what it meant, just a little silent. I think students will read this quote and ask questions. Teachers will be able to explain to them the vision of the grad. I'll definitely use the vision of the grad after my school.
This hall pass project was the first time I really learned about the vision of the graduate. I believe these passes will help people become more aware of objectives and how they may be applied to their hall passes.
So the first thing that I did was I laminated these so that my students, I introduced them to my students really early on in the school year. And then on a daily basis, if some, when I'm planning activities, one of the things I'm doing is sort of modeling. And so for example, if we're going to be moving into groups, we'll be talking about collaboration. And so students, we kind of refresh what collaboration means. And then when they are in their groups, they'll have a self-evaluation tool which also focuses on accountability. And so the way I'm embedding is by being very purposeful and making sure I use the vocabulary on a daily basis. Another example would be if a problem presents itself in class, instead of me solving their problems, I will say, oh, this is a great example where we can practice problem solving. And so then I'll turn the question back to the class and see what they can come up with as potential solutions. So I'm finding it very easy to incorporate these core competencies because they really are truly embedded in what a natural tool is. because they really are truly embedded in what a natural language teacher.
Thanks, Marty.
You're welcome, Tom.
So, so again, it speaks for itself. But it's a flavoring of the kinds of things that are going on. Again, that was between late October and early December. And you got a cross-section of some academic classes. We'll continue. The goal is to continue to embed competencies into what we do and really to advertise it and kind of have it be omnipresent. This video itself is hopefully going to go up on the website tomorrow. And, you know, signage and awareness. And as Lori Snyder said, you know, being intentional and purposeful about making sure that we're using that vocabulary and making it part of the everyday culture of LHS.
Thank you, Tom. I'm sure Tom would be, would welcome any questions or comments that the committee has at this point.
Comments or questions from the committee? Nicole, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you, guys, to all the students and faculty who put this together. It was nice to get a glimpse into how this vision of the graduate is being used in the school and to get a glimpse at some of the projects and activities that everyone's been doing. Really enjoyed seeing that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicole. Anyone else? Mary, go ahead.
I think the common vocabulary will help with transfer of skills from one discipline to another. So when I think about the example that the teacher provided, collaboration, so things that you might do to collaborate in one classroom can also happen in classrooms across the school. So that's exciting because it's a very cohesive effort to have this be part of every single classroom, no matter what classroom you're in.
Thanks, Mary. Any other comments or questions? So I'd like to jump in and just, you know, say to Tom and to all of the LHS teachers, you know, this is, this is great work. It's really exciting. And I definitely recognize some of those projects from when my kids were at LHS. And I know how excited they were working on them. And it's great to see the kids talking about it. It's great to see Ms. Snyder talking about it from her perspective. So I think it's wonderful to have both the student perspective and the faculty perspective in that video. And I do think it really helps folks whose kids maybe aren't at LHS yet to see what sort of things are going to happen and to get their kids and the parents excited about all the great work that's going on with the vision of the graduate at LHS. So, Tom, I think it's great. And I know we all are really excited about the work that you guys are doing on this topic at LHS. So thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. And the goal is to continue to update the committee. And, you know, the visit from the next visiting team comes in December of 2022. But we have a lot of work to do before that. And we have a lot of work to do once they leave. It's a continuing cycle.
Marty, anything that you want to add?
Yeah, thanks so much, Tom. Appreciate your time tonight on a busy day. And I know one of the ways that you're further looking to embed the VOG is to consider ways to sort of evaluate students' progress towards attaining those VOG competencies. So we'll stay tuned for that as well. So once again, thanks. And kudos to Deb Callahan, Betsy Mitchell, and others that worked on that video tonight.
Thanks so much, and thanks for having me.
Thanks, Tom. All right, I think we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is administrative reports. And Marty's going to start us off with the superintendent report.
Thank you. There's a written report in your packet. Our work in recent weeks has centered on responding to the recent COVID surge and CBC and DESI's release and Massachusetts' release of new isolation and quarantine procedures. So over the last couple of weeks, we have really completely reinvented the processes that we've used to respond to COVID events and the way we manage COVID cases. We spent a considerable amount of intense time developing new electronic forms and databases for staff and families to report COVID events. We had to spend a lot of time reviewing and thinking about the implementation of those new isolation and quarantine protocols. And then also, as committees are aware, we have really had to really be more focused in the way that we have investigated COVID cases and notified families as well. So it's been a, it's been a really ambitious undertaking over the last couple of weeks. I'd say it frankly has crowded out most other work for us as administrators and clerical staff or nursing staff have been incredibly busy with this. In fact, one way of gauging this is we had introduced new forms to staff and families on January 5th. It was last Wednesday afternoon. And since that time, we're now up to about 315 COVID events that had been reported to us and that each of which needs a response from clerical staff or nursing staff or administrative staff. So it was, it's been a heavy lift over the last couple of weeks. But really like to acknowledge the incredible efforts of the staff to, you know, respond to these new protocols and to keep our eyes on the ball. Particularly, shout out to our, the Long Meadow Human Resources Department, who over the holiday break spent a considerable amount of time reviewing and advising staff on COVID situations. And that responsibility has since been supported by Diane Gigantis and Mary Talbot Berry, who also works in the central office. So kudos to them for stepping up and stepping into this as well. It's really changed a lot of their work. So, and it goes without saying that we are just incredibly indebted to our nurses. They have, you know, responded very quickly and with dedication to the recent surge. And so, very appreciative of everything that they've done and continue to do for us to keep us safe. So worth noting that while we were shorthanded with our nursing staff earlier or at the end of 2021, we're now fully staffed. And we have a full roster of nurses that are available to support families and staff. So that's great news. I'll come back to the masking note in a minute. The tiered focus monitoring, I included a note in my report to you that we had a visit from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education last week. They were here as part of their tiered focus monitoring review of Long Meadow Public Schools. This is something that we experience once every three years. In fact, every district, every charter school in Massachusetts experiences it once every three years. And it's an opportunity for DESI to monitor our compliance with a range of federal and state special education and civil rights legislation, regulations, rather. The, as part of that tiered focus monitoring review, a member of the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow was interviewed, district staff and administrators were interviewed. The DESI team reviewed student records. And they also toured our schools to take a look at some of our highly specialized programs. So it's a really intense process. Kudos to Jean Fontaine and Sue Bertrand for leading our response to that tiered focus monitoring review process. We're expecting a report back within the next 60 days. And we'll be sure to share that with the committee and make it publicly accessible as well. Got some good preliminary feedback from the lead on that DESI team when I spoke with her last week. And she seemed very pleased and impressed with our compliance with a range of regulations. So that was great news. Friday afternoon, I have an opportunity to sit down with some leaders from other town departments to participate in what's called a Community Resilience Building Workshop. And this is, the intent of this is to pull together a team of town departments, or leaders of town departments, to talk about some strategies that would build resiliency in the face of climate instability. The workshop hopefully would result in us being able to, the town rather, being able to submit towards, for grants from the state's Municipal Vulnerability Program, the MVP Action Grant Program. So looking forward to sitting down with a bunch of my colleagues from the town. And we don't have enough opportunities to do that these days. So hopefully, that will be a rewarding process. With regard to masking, as the committee is aware, DESI Commissioner Jeff Riley did announce yesterday that they were extending the mask mandate requirement in schools through Monday, February 28th. The department will continue to review it in the weeks ahead. The, I should note that the 80% threshold of the policy does remain accessible to LPS. So at this stage, it wouldn't be my recommendation to reinstate that mask optional policy. But that is something that we'll continue to evaluate and keep the committee updated on. The other thing that was in your packet, we had an opportunity to gather some feedback from students and staff on the, sort of that optional trial masking period from, that lasted from December 6th through December 22nd. The results of those surveys are in your packet along with the comments from staff. Mr. Duncan Lee, the assistant principal at the high school, took the opportunity to sort of gather some of the most representative student comments from that survey, which the committee wants me to pull some of that, the pie charts up or... Just give me one second here. I'll start with the student survey results. So thank you to Mr. Dunkerly for working with a group of students to gather some feedback on that optional masking period. And I'll just enlarge it a bit here for you. So we had 253 responses. 75% of those who responded said that they had been granted permission to unmask over the last couple of weeks. And we, a number of students, probably in my mind, a sort of a surprising number of students have reported that it didn't really significantly change their learning in the classroom over the last couple of weeks. But 34% reported that it improved their experience, which is a sizable number as well. And then a portion, probably around 10%, had reported that it had impaired their experience. The, Mr. Duncan Lee had provided, again, sort of some of the representative comments. And so you can, I think they speak for themselves. You can review those. And if you have any comments or questions, happy to respond. But you'll see that some reported that they enjoyed seeing their friends' faces. Others felt that it was easy to focus, made it more comfortable. And others had reported that not a lot had changed. So again, comments speak for themselves. Their overall experience, again, here, so 41% reporting that it had improved their overall experience. A comparable portion had reported that it was unchanged. And we had 15% of the respondents tell us that it had negatively affected their experience during that trial period. And the comments are there, they speak for themselves. They're there for your review. Happy to linger more on this if you want. But you'll see, I don't have a strong opinion on masking up, and I'm still enjoying high school. Still going through high school the same whether people wear a mask or not. I think we did, you know, I'd say from the staff and the student survey, we generally had a sense that it was, the implementation of it was manageable, that students were cooperative, that they were generally very respectful of each other's choices. And so that was one thing that we wanted to monitor during that trial period. So in that sense, it was a good experience for Long Meadow High School. Whether the, whether we were in an optional masking phase or a universal requirement phase, you know, you have, you have the issues of monitoring and compliance and enforcement. But we were pleased to hear that during the trial masking period, the optional masking period, the enforcement and management issues were not, were not anything that we couldn't handle at the high school. So again, a range of opinions, people offering us different thoughts and ideas on that, everything. We'll see. Again, those comments sort of speak for themselves. One reported at the end there, "I'm asking, worse in my school year?" Felt that their students were segregated into two different groups. So I think that concludes the student survey. I'll swing over to the staff survey here. Here we asked just a slightly different question to the staff to start, which most closely described your situation. You'll see that 21% said that they were able to unmask and mostly did. That red chunk of the pie chart was staff reporting that they were able to unmask, but they rarely or never did. And then a sizable chunk, about a third, reporting, "I was able to unmask and always or nearly always did." So that gave us some idea of the staff experience. Again, most, you know, the great majority reporting that it either improved their teaching experience or perhaps it didn't change it in significant ways. How has the masking policy affected your students' overall experience? So this is teachers' impression and students' experience. Most reported that they felt that it had, 50% reported, rather, that they felt that it had improved their students' experience. Only 10%, less than 10% reporting that it had perhaps worsened that experience. And we also asked, this was issued, I think it was the third week of December, which statement they most closely agree with. And the largest response category was staff who reported that they had some reservations and suggested that LHS should reinstate the optional mask policy, but only when we see less COVID activity at the present. 28% reported that they had no reservations and that LHS should reinstate the mask optional policy more immediately. Again, this survey was administered just before the holiday break, probably the second into the third week of December. How has masking affected students' overall experience? Most reporting that they felt that it had improved student experience. Nearly a third reporting that they didn't feel that it changed the overall student experience at all. And then perhaps 10% or so reporting that it had impaired that experience. So those are the staff responses. And then we also had the, we gave you the full text of the staff responses to the sort of open-ended portions of the survey. And they mirrored what we had heard from the students, many staff reporting that, that they were, you know, encouraged. Committee that thought it improved communication, that they didn't have to ask students to speak more loudly. They enjoyed seeing students' faces. Some reported that they were not willing to unmask if it meant the students were unmasked themselves. Classroom conversation was improved. Some reported that they felt they had to promote distance to a greater degree if students were unmasked. Again, I'm sort of trying to give you a representative sample of some of the comments. And some reporting that they felt they just wanted us to stick with one policy so as to avoid the uncertainty or the... to avoid the uncertainty or the or the, you know, the change from universal masking to optional masking. So quite a few comments in there for you to review. And, you know, we certainly can come back to the survey and dive into it further if there's something that you're hoping to understand in some different way from the survey results that we received. So thanks for the opportunity to feed that information back to you. I know the committee was very interested in getting some staff feedback and student feedback.
Thank you, Marty. Let's go to questions and comments for Marty. I see that Bronwyn is going to start us off. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Thanks. Marty, how many teachers do we have at the high school?
We have, so it was open to staff and it was open to educators and staff. So so I'm looking over to Mr. Mas, maybe 120, 130. So we had 70, let's see, what did we have, 78 responses out of the 130.
I don't know what the percentage is, but I do appreciate them taking the time to not only give us the feedback with the direct questions, but also the comments were, I thought, very useful and well thought out. And that was that was helpful helpful to me. I know sometimes it can be easy to just take the survey and then jump off it, but I found the comment section very interesting and, you know, just more helpful to see different size teachers were coming from and, you know, different things they were seeing and experiencing. I think it's great that if you look at it, pretty much 80% of them are looking at, they feel comfortable, you know, when, you know, when you feel things are safe or the community safer, that the mask optional is what they're comfortable with. Was a was a student's only one grade?
It was all grades. We had 253 responses. So that's that is out of about 900 or so students at the high school. So we didn't get as wide a response on the student side as we did get the staff. I think it was 20, about 28% of the students responded. I think overall, I mean, it was a overall, it was a good experience. And of course, you know, a lot has changed since we initiated the optional mask period on December 6th. But I think, you know, from a, you know, from a, in terms of the managerial experience with it, it went well. I think I think students were respectful of each other's choices. And I think what we saw was students were sometimes selective. If they felt the conditions were right and they had permission and they were vaccinated, that they would unmask. And then other times they would choose to mask depending on, you know, what the what the conditions were and what setting they were in. So I think that was, it gave students, it gave students that choice. And, I mean, we're, again, whether masking is is universal or optional, there's always sort of, you know, managerial and enforcement that needs to happen, but it certainly was not any more challenging than it currently is when masking is universal.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Thank you, Marty. Mary, go ahead.
Marty, I was just wondering if you could address the 300-plus COVID events and just talk about how the high number of staff and student absences might be affecting just day-to-day operations. How are things going at the school level and the student level too?
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that. We have seen a significant number of absences across the district. Our tally today, I'm just going to do, we probably had over 300 students absent today in the district out of our total population of 2,800 or 2,900. So that's a that's a significant number. We have about 67 active cases that have been reported to us right now. So 67 active cases now. The reality is with home testing that it's very, it's likely that the actual number of active cases among Long Meadow Public Schools students is higher. It used to be that when the only tests available were the PCR tests, we would have a better handle on it because it all went into the into the state maintenance system. So now we're we're sort of relying on families self-reporting or the PCR results that do come to the town health officials. So it's a it's a significant number of of active cases. It's a significant number of absent students. We've had regularly around 30 staff members absent due to COVID-related situations. And and, you know, when I think about these numbers compared to last year, it's it's a significant jump. I was looking at, on January 11th of last year, we had seven active cases that were reported to us, and this year it's 67. Now, again, a lot has changed in a year. I don't, I don't mean to say that we're comparing apples to apples, but all of these cases do need to be responded to. There are families that are looking for guidance or staff that's looking for guidance. And it really, it's 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 challenging and taxing to our nurses, to our administrators, the the town contact tracing coordinator has done an amazing job, and she was working pretty regularly over the holiday break, and she she continues to work hard on those things. And in town, there are, they're aware of three, as of January 7th, 341 active cases in town. Again, that just just far exceeds anything that we've seen. But again, the, you know, a lot has changed. We have, I still would maintain that schools are a safe place for children, that there's there's stable environments, they're controlled environments where we have layers of mitigation in place. So despite the numbers, I still feel confident that, you know, we we should remain in person. I get that question from time to time. But I feel strongly and very confidently that, you know, while it's challenging to manage these cases and support families and staff, it's right for us to continue to be in person. So, but I appreciate the chance to to answer that.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Marty. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Marty, of the cases that we've had, have any been in-school transmissions?
Yeah, thanks for asking that as well. And that goes to why I feel that, you know, schools are safe places to be for children right now. It gets a little more complicated given the volume of cases, but I can confidently say that we're still not seeing, by and large, we're not seeing evidence of in-school transmission. Now, the truth is, the numbers are so high that it's sometimes hard to rule out in-school transmission. But mostly, the cases, almost overwhelmingly, the cases that we're aware of are the result of transmission that's happening at home, outside of school. So I think, given how stable and controlled school environments are, it's the reason that we're not seeing that in-school transmission.
Okay, that's great. I thought I read somewhere that Governor Baker said that, like, total remote schooling wasn't an option and that 180 days had to be in-person. So I know people are asking you that question, but, I mean, that that pretty much would mean we would have to go additional school days if they're not going to count, you know, remote days. So it seems like if there's little to none school-based transmissions, then that's really good news. It's also really good news that somehow the schools are able to get all the classes covered even with the high number of teachers that have to isolate or quarantine or, you know, stay home. So that's a good sign.
You characterized the Governor Baker's approach, you know, very, very accurately. And even even DESI has taken the same position, that 180 days means 180 days of in-person learning. So that that's the expectation that's being handed to us, and I think that's what what should be expected of us, frankly. So that, you know, I think that my my biggest worry really about, you know, the disruption of the school schedule relates to staffing. And, you know, we've gotten through what I hope is maybe the the peak of the of the COVID cases, but we don't, I have no way of knowing, right? But if if we are through the peak, then that would be great. But I do worry that staffing challenges could disrupt school schedules and and cause us to have to, you know, take essentially what would be a snow day because if we cancel school, as you say, Bronwyn, if we cancel school on a given day, we'd have to make it up in June.
Let's go to Suzie next.
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I think what's hard in all of this is knowing that there are many children who are losing time in school and there are, I mean, increasingly more and more who are losing time in school. So while I'm, you know, happy that the state is focused on the 180 days, you know, having 180 days be the school year doesn't mean that every child is getting an equitable education because many are having to quarantine and isolate at home. So I think it's incumbent upon the school committee and the administration to continue to figure out, we know that, like, the best days are when students are with their teachers. And I'm not slighting in any way, shape, or form any substitutes or anything like that. But even when we have substitutes, you know, students aren't necessarily getting the benefit of a high-quality teacher in front of them. So we have to consider that that in aggregate, that there's a lot of impact on our learners educationally from time out of school, from time without their teacher, and how are we going to, you know, continue to address that? Because, you know, we've heard from, you hear from teachers around and even teachers not in, you know, Long Meadow, that it's very hard to carry on lesson plans when half your class is missing and you know that you're, you know, so that that's the other piece of this. It's like, we can characterize it that, yeah, we're good with 180 days, but I have a real concern about the quality that is left behind after we, you know, kind of get down to the raw data of who's actually in school and who's actually able to educate our kids.
Yes, well said. I think we worry about that as well. And I think the shortened quarantine and isolation periods have reduced the amount of time that the children have to be out. But for sure, the level of absenteeism that we're seeing is obviously not, you know, helpful to to teaching and learning. And and it is disruptive to school routines to have that many students absent, so for sure.
Thank you, Suzie. If it's all right, I'm going to jump on some questions, Marty. So first, I want to echo Bronwyn's initial comments and just thank everybody who participated in the survey, students, faculty, staff. You know, we we did this as a pilot to figure out if it would work, and it's great to hear from folks who are part of it through the survey to give us what my take on it is, some very positive feedback. And I want to acknowledge that it wasn't positive for everybody, but it was, I think, reassuring to see that it was positive or no impact for an overwhelming majority. And I think that's a wonderful thing to see in this really tough situation. And I also agree with Bronwyn that reading the comments was super helpful. So, you know, thank you to everybody for putting that stuff in and rest assured that we're reading that, and it's really helpful to us to not just have pie charts, but also to have narrative feedback. So thank you for that. Marty, just a couple of questions, if if we could pursue this a little bit more. I guess I have a couple of levels of questions. So I want to first start at the high school where, you know, I think, I don't want to speak for the whole committee. To me, it seemed a very rational move to pull the plug on that pilot and to continue to have the folks at the high school masked currently. Can you just remind us, let us know what other schools who are taking advantage of the optional masking protocol, did all of them pull the plug on that? Did they all go to like, no, 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 we're going masked? Like, can you just give us some perspective from from the other districts who are participating in this program?
Yeah, thank you. So there was a very limited number of schools that actually implemented the optional masking approach. Around 20 had submitted to DESI that they had reached the 80% threshold, but a far smaller number had actually implemented it. And so the the districts that implemented it, I believe, the ones I'm aware of discontinued it, the ones that I was in touch with, had discontinued it at around, at or around the same time that we did as well. I can't, I can't say with certainty that they didn't reinstate the optional masking period this week, but I'd have to, I'd have to go back and reach out to those to those districts, the 50%.
Thank you, Marty. And following up on that, I guess I'm curious, and we may not have the data yet, which is fine, but if we could get it for next meeting, that would be spectacular, which is like, how are our other schools doing with respect to vaccination rates? You know, are we getting close to being able to make this decision for the middle schools and even for the elementary schools? And again, I I know we're putting you on the spot, I know you didn't necessarily prepare this, but I think those are the conversations that I think the committee would like to have in the future because obviously those are things that we just want to know what our options are. So, yeah, that's my question.
I can tell you that 44, in a recent report that was provided to me by our contact tracing coordinator, that 44% of Long Meadow students ages five to 11 were registered as vaccinated in the in the database that they have access to. Middle school, I don't have that at my fingertips tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Marty. And again, I would just say, you know, it'd be great if we could get some clarity on that to figure out, you know, if we are going to have the ability to to explore this 80% threshold. I'm assuming it'll happen next at the middle schools and then we'll, you know, hopefully get to that at the elementary schools. But, yeah, thank you for for staying on top of that. Are there other comments or questions for Marty on his superintendent's report? All right, I think we are going to move on then. Marty, thank you very much. Next up are assistant superintendent reports. Sue, Tom, you guys have stuff for us. So Sue, I think just did a thumbs down. Tom, thumbs down. Okay, excellent. We will move right along then. The chair report, I have a couple of things for folks. One, it says this in the annotated agenda, just to acknowledge that we received the LPVEC annual report and audit. Folks can take a look at that if they would like to. I think after talking to Marty, I would just say there are no surprises in that report. Marty, I don't know if you want to comment more on that, but maybe Mary will comment on that as part of her report.
And no surprises, nothing out of the ordinary, but certainly the committee would like to bring that back for a deeper dive in future meetings. Happy to do that.
Thank you, Marty. The other things that that I would say, again, I say this every meeting, and I'm going to continue to say it every meeting. One, thank you to everybody who has been vaccinated and boosted. Two, if you haven't and your kids haven't, I really want to encourage you to do that. As we continue to say, it provides us with flexibility. It's also the best way to keep people safe. It's also the best way to keep people safe, keep people in school, keep people out of hospitals, um, and from infecting other people. So, um, we've been doing well in the community and I hope we can continue to do well. Uh, so again, thanks to folks who have already done it and an encouragement to folks who haven't. The final thing that I want to report on is the upcoming election. Uh, it is 2022 and we have an election. Um, so I just want to remind folks that, uh, if you want to run for the school committee, uh, now is the time to get nomination papers from the town hall. Uh, those papers are available now and they are, uh, they must be picked up by March 4th and then you have to submit the completed paperwork by March 8th. So that deadline's gonna come up pretty quickly. You have to get 50 signatures from Long Meadow residents. Um, so I think I would also say if, if folks have questions about serving on the committee, uh, members of the committee would be happy to talk to you about what we do. Uh, I also know the superintendent is very generous with his time and is happy to talk to folks who are thinking about doing this. And, and again, just from my perspective, uh, having this be the, I think, third year that I'm on the committee, um, you know, it's, uh, it's really rewarding work and you get to work with a great group of folks, uh, committee members, administrators, um, and it's really, uh, it's rewarding. So I want to encourage folks who are thinking about it to reach out to us, go get the, uh, nomination papers and, and please fill it out. We would love, uh, for folks to be interested and keep the good work of the committee going. Uh, any comments or questions on that? And Jessica, as you know, visitor comment period is over. So if you have additional comments, you have to write them an email. Uh, committee members, any comments or questions? All right, so we are now on to student rep report. Dagan, you're up.
All right, so I would like to start by thanking all the students that responded to the mask policy report. I was one of the students who got to work and create that with Mr. Dunkley. It was a great experience. It was good to see all your data. Uh, moving into my other reports for classes, the classes of 2022, our graduating class had their play audition today. I heard that went well. We shall see in the coming day, in the coming days, the task list. Can't wait to see that show. Sports, uh, I'd like to shout out to the gentlemen right now in the gym, our rest, good luck to them. I hope all your matches go well. I got plenty of friends on the wrestling team and, uh, so any LHS students, good luck to them. Um, the LHS anti-racism committee meeting is tonight, I believe, and they, they are, does their first official meeting, move of that, great things, I hope, and.
It might be that our folks that are zooming in aren't able to hear you for some reason. I'm not sure. Maybe try, are you able to try a different microphone for us?
Do y'all hear me?
Su- Suzie, could you hear any of that or no?
He was going in and out. Like you could hear some of it and then it's, then he kept talking and it stopped. And then he'd come back. And then he'd come back.
Y'all hear me now?
So, Dagan, my recommendation, we had to do this, uh, a couple of meetings ago, maybe if you could use somebody else's microphone?
Who would like to join your microphone?
All right, we're working through the technical difficulties. We're gonna try a different microphone. If that doesn't work, we're gonna try a different computer. All right, we're gonna try Dagan on a different computer.
Last time, can everyone hear me now? Awesome. Uh, I won't go through most of it. I mean, I spoke most about the wrestling team, the class auditions, anti-racism committee meeting, and finally, I'd like to end with the congratulations to the students that were mentioned from CTEC. Cage and Jack, well done. You guys are excelling here, here at the high school and at CTEC, so well done and good luck to you all. That is all I have to report at this time.
Thank you, Dagan. Thank you, uh, for working through the technical difficulties. Um, any comments or questions for Dagan? All right, we're gonna get the tech back up. All right, so we're gonna move to other reports. Uh, first up is LPVEC. Mary, brought to you.
Uh, the LPVEC board met on December 15th and we heard two presentations, one from the executive director. Um, some highlights are that LPVEC received a Safe and Support of Schools grant and the amount of $10,000. Uh, we reviewed COVID ESSER reimbursement, um, and also a special education coordinated program review was completed. Uh, there had been three areas for correction and, and those three areas were minor, but they were met and, um, received satisfactory marks. Um, so those three were on bullying prevention and intervention. It had to do with some languaging in the policy that needed to be updated. Um, some student discipline, uh, procedures for suspension. Sorry, is that okay? Yep, okay. Procedures for suspension needed to be updated and the last, um, item, uh, had to do with behavior support. The director of finance provided a presentation, uh, reviewed the revenue and expenditure report and the treasurer's report. Um, just an interesting note, you can't just get rid of property that you own, so they have a, um, 2004 Pontiac Grand Prix that we voted that yes, in fact, they can dispose of. Um, that generated some laughter among the group, but I guess, uh, they just use these old cars and they do everything they can possibly do to them and there is nothing more that can be done. So it's just this hunk of junk that's been hanging around. So we, um, voted yes, they can dispose of that. Our next meeting is on January 19th. It's a great group, um, just a personal note, I'm really enjoying working with, um, with the folks on that board. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mary. We always appreciate your detailed and humorous updates. Um, any comments or questions for Mary? All right, next up, energy and sustainability. We haven't met since our last meeting, so I have no report. Uh, SEAL, that will go to Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, so in the continued efforts to raise awareness and community around special education needs, programs and resources, the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, SEAL, is having their January meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday, January 12th, at 7:00 PM on public rights and, and transitioning. And the SEAL website is sealma.org. So again, I encourage you to please check it out, check out the website, um, and attend the meeting. It's virtual, um, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Any comments or questions for Gianna? Tax Ceiling Task Force, uh, the next meeting is on the 12th, so I'm guessing we do not have an update. Marty, is that correct?
Uh, correct, no meeting. In fact, the, they had to cancel the meeting, so there is no meeting tomorrow of the Tax Ceiling Task Force.
Thank you for the update, Marty. Uh, that brings us to subcommittee reports. Uh, we have an update from the finance subcommittee, so I am going to turn that over to Tom for the update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, so we did meet back on December 9th and we reviewed those items back on our December 14th meeting. Tonight, we just want to review the schedule for approval of the FY '23 budget. So we anticipate meeting, a meeting on February 1st, which would be the presentation of the draft budget, which is a special meeting. It's not a regularly scheduled meeting, so it wouldn't be on your, uh, list of meeting dates. Um, then on February 8th, which would be a regular scheduled meeting, we would conduct a public hearing, which we are required to do every year, which the community is, uh, invited to come and provide feedback or ask questions in regards to, uh, the budget that was presented to the school committee at the previous meeting. And then we do need to schedule a subsequent meeting at some point, uh, after the 8th in order to vote, uh, an approved budget to submit to the town manager and select board, which would have to be done by, I think it's the 18th, the Friday before February vacation. So there's some flexibility as to exactly when we want to schedule that meeting. So I believe we are open to suggestions or, uh, timeframe as to when we would like to schedule that, uh, subsequent meeting after the 8th for approval.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I, I think on, on the proposed, uh, meeting dates, I, I think that the suggestion was to add the meeting on the 1st, as it says here. We already have a meeting scheduled on the 8th and then add a meeting on the 15th, so we would continue to do our regular Tuesday evening meeting schedule. Is that correct, Tom? So I, I think that the proposal is to add two meetings on the 1st and the 15th. Um, and if you're looking at the annotated agenda to just fill in the question mark with the 15th, so the first would be the presentation, the 8th would be the public hearing, and the 15th would be the date to approve the budget. Um, did, did I summarize that correctly, Tom?
Yeah, assuming that works for everybody, there is some flexibility around the 15th, but that was the initial thought, to keep it consistent.
A- absolutely. So, so I, I, I think that's just a, a proposal, so I would love to hear from the committee members to see if that, um, if that plan works for people. Uh, I see some thumbs up. Uh, Gianna, go ahead.
Tom, I, I know I've done this a couple of times already, so I apologize for that. This will give us time to do everything we're supposed to do, correct?
Yes, it would.
Look at it, ask questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the committee? So just a, a question for me to make sure we understand, uh, the procedure here. Uh, that February 8th public hearing on the budget, um, that's a regularly scheduled meeting of the committee? Are, are we proposing to just have that be the public hearing or would that be a public hearing plus a regular meeting?
I think Diane can weigh in, but my understanding it would be a regular meeting with the public hearing embedded into, uh, the regularly scheduled meeting. So other business could occur on the 8th and a specific time would be set aside when the hearing would have to be opened and the community would have an opportunity to ask questions or provide feedback on the budget.
So, so it's essentially a visitor comment period, but specifically addressing the budget? And so it doesn't have to be a specific meeting, it can just be an agenda item and so we can have a regular meeting with that as one of the agenda items?
Yeah, I think the only difference has to be a specific time that is advertised, that the hearing itself will be open for the public.
Sure. So for example, we could say we're gonna have that at the beginning of the meeting and it starts at 6:30. Okay, all right, th- thank you. Um, I apologize if other folks understood what was going on there, but, uh, struggling to remember a year ago what we did. So it seems like these dates are going to work for people. Okay, wonderful. So then I, I think that we have just filled in that question mark with the 15th and so we've added a meeting on the 1st and a meeting on the 15th. And again, just to remind folks around budget time, this is a pretty common thing that happens on the committee, that we end up adding these dates, um, and, and that's just the way it goes. So I, I appreciate everybody making that work in their schedules. Um, I know that it's, uh, it's tough to add meetings, but I thank you for your flexibility. Mary, go ahead.
And we also have a meeting on the 21st. I'm just flipping a page over for the school committee, um, budget presentation to select board, or is that something different?
Yeah. Tom, can you address that?
As one of the items on the list.
Yeah, I don't necessarily know that we're certain that that meeting's taking place on the 21st. I mean, even if it does, usually superintendent, uh, the chair of the committee or the chair of the subcommittee, finance sub, would attend with myself to present, uh, the approved budget that the school committee submitted.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Mary. Um, so yeah, February gets, um, gets busy. Other comments or questions on that meeting schedule? Okay. Uh, Tom, building use request?
Thank you again. Uh, on your agenda tonight is a request for building use from the Long Meadow Aquatic Club for Monday, January 31st, for use of the high school cafeteria from 5:00 to 8:00 for an end of year banquet for the swim program. Um, so I just, uh, was bringing it to here for approval. Uh, they anticipate about 100 participants. We would, uh, through the permit, if it's approved, uh, require, make sure, remind them of our safety protocols in terms of masking is required unless they're sitting, eating, and appropriate social distancing, uh, when they're in the building and the like.
Comments or questions on that proposal? Tom, do you have any concerns about this?
I don't believe so. I mean, uh, again, making clear what the expectations are while I'm here using the buildings, in terms of the safety measures that will be laid out, I don't anticipate or have a concern.
Other comments or questions? Uh, we have a potential motion.
I moved that the school committee approved the, I'm sorry, wrong page. I moved that the school committee approved the building use request for the Long Meadow Aquatics Club dated December 14th, 2021, for use of the Long Meadow High School cafeteria on January 31st, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, let's move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you, Tom. Uh, we do not have any other subcommittee reports, so we will move to ongoing business. And there we have school improvement plans. I will turn that over to Marty. This is a, uh, continuation of what we had presented at our previous meeting. So Marty, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so you'll recall at your last meeting, we had the entire administrative team with us and they presented, uh, their school improvement plans. Uh, school improvement plans, if you recall, are, uh, required to be developed by, uh, school councils and, uh, those school councils are representative bodies consisting of educators, uh, community members, uh, staff, parents, uh, and in the older, uh, in the middle school and the high school, we include students as well. So those school improvement plans were, we provided with you with an overview. Uh, the detailed plans, um, were included in your packet in your last meeting and again, this meeting, and so we would, uh, seek your final review and approval of those school improvement plans.
Thank you, Marty, and, and thanks to everybody who presented last time and who worked on the improvement plans. Um, and we know how much work goes into these. Um, are there comments or questions for Marty from the committee?
and approval of those school improvement plans.
Thank you, Marty, and thanks to everybody who presented last time and who worked on the improvement plans. And we know how much work goes into these. Are there comments or questions for Marty from the committees? We have a possible motion.
I move on the recommendation of the individual school councils that the School Committee approve the 2021 through 2023 school improvement plans for Blueberry Hill School, Center School, Wolfswamp Road School, Glenbrook Middle School, Williams Middle School, and Long Meadow High School as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Suzie?
abstained.
Bronwyn?
abstained.
And yes for me. All right. That brings us to new business. And the first order of business is review of School Committee goals. And this agenda item is in here because when we passed our goals, we said that we were to review them once in January, sort of a mid-year review, and then once again in June. So now is the time to review the goals. So I think I would just like to take it by section and see if there are comments, questions, thoughts on the section. So let me just get to that. Sorry, I can't find the right document. Maybe this is why I should get the hard copy. All right, here we go. All right, so the first item under goals is curriculum. So I wonder if folks have comments or questions on our curricular goals.
Kevin, where did you find that?
So it's in the packet. Marty, maybe you could share it, screen share it, and then everybody could look at it. Would that be helpful? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Marty. So while Marty's doing it, I can just read through the curriculum on. So it talks about working through the Curriculum Subcommittee to engage in curriculum analysis and review to support district improvement plans focused on successful alignment and implementation of the vision of the graduate across all LPS schools, successful creation and implementation of multi-tiered systems of support across all LPS schools, differentiated instruction that inclusively accounts for differences in students' holistic learning needs, competencies, interests, and levels of readiness, inclusive and equitable practices and outcomes. I feel like a lot of what I just read were in the district improvement plans that we just approved. So it's great to see those two things working so well together. And then finally, it says this work will be informed by multiple data points, including climate surveys, district assessment results, equity reports, and a challenge success survey of student experiences. So Marty's got it up there for you. Are there comments or questions on the curriculum portion of our committee goals? Let's start with Bronwyn, and then we'll go to Gianna.
I can't remember when we discussed this, maybe about the program of studies at the high school. Just making that more, I guess, user-friendly and so it's all the same would be super helpful. And also for number four, inclusive and equitable practices and outcomes. I didn't know if the Committee, Curriculum Committee, had a chance to talk about adding some more honors classes at the 11th and 12th grade areas. A lot of the students can take honors classes in 9th and 10th grade, and then they get to 11th grade and 12th grade, and they have to choose between College Prep 1 or AP. It's something that I think the school implemented for physics a couple of years ago, and it seemed like the feedback on that was good. So I was just wondering, just to make it equitable for everybody and inclusive for everybody, that we try and add more of those.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Bronwyn. I think Nicole is going to address that.
Thank you. Yes. So those are actually topics that we addressed at our last Curriculum Subcommittee meeting, and we are in the process of scheduling another Subcommittee meeting for the coming weeks. Some of the topics included are looking at that program of studies again. We had a lengthy conversation about it during our last meeting, in particular, looking at some of the data regarding student enrollment and participation in classes across multiple content areas, and are planning to return to that conversation again in a few weeks at our upcoming meeting with some further data points to hopefully inform our conversations. And we will also be addressing more on the question of standard-based report cards at the elementary level and looking at equity across programming in the middle school as well. So those are some of the ongoing conversations happening at Curriculum Subcommittee.
Oh, it sounds great. You guys are extremely busy. So we certainly appreciate that. I guess the follow-up question for Marty would be, Marty, would this be in time for the program of studies if any changes were made for when we vote on the program of studies this year for next year?
Checking with Diane on when, I don't know if the high school's been in touch on a date for the program of studies, but the last Nicole and I had talked about this, that it was the type of review. We were trying to hone in on the type of review that the committee was interested in. But one of the things we were looking at was the representation across all levels of students with disabilities. So that was another topic. So there's a few balls in the air. I don't think we will have courses, additional courses in place at the high school to address the first concern that you had regarding the availability of honors classes at the junior year. And mostly, I think where we see that is in English and Social Studies. It's a little, I think in Science and Math, it's, there are more honors options there. But that continues to be part of the of the Curriculum Subcommittee's review. I think the focus of the last meeting related to the special education students and their representation in all levels in high school classes.
Okay, just if I could follow up. And this has nothing to do with this year's committee. This is something I brought up, Marty, to you, I think, my first year on the committee. So four years ago. And it just seems like each year, we just leave it the same without, like, without a real reason. I'm just still not sure why we edited immediately for physics and left it for English and Social Studies. The students have, like, they don't have the opportunity to choose to take honors because it's not available. And it's putting them in perhaps a very stressful situation. When we look at the Challenge Success Survey, maybe they, you know, are coming from honors and, you know, want to take honors again, but it's not there for them. And I don't think that that's acceptable, especially seeing it's been going on for a long time. And I appreciate the committee addressing it, the Curriculum Committee addressing it this year. I had hoped to see it in the program of studies this year so that students would have the opportunity to make... We're just giving them hardly any choices. I don't think that's fair. I'm definitely disappointed. And like I said, each year, there's really no reason for not having it.
Yeah, as you noted, we had added the honors physics option, and then honors, I think there was a computer science honors option as well. And so the next step would be to look at, look at the English and Social Studies. I think if that's a, you know, I think we would want to know as early as tonight if that's something that maybe we want to include in the upcoming program of studies, to add that honors option, whether it be in English or Social Studies or both at the high school.
Let's go back to Nicole on this.
I know when we had our last meeting, we had brainstormed a little bit some potentially creative ways to incorporate honors offerings at an earlier date. And I'm hoping that maybe we can hear a little bit more about some of the ways that we might be able to get started on this, even if it's not developing a full new course. But finding ways to incorporate honors offerings even within current standing courses might be a way to make this an available option for students earlier. So hopefully, we can, again, get a little bit more information on that at our next Subcommittee meeting and see if that might be a way to begin making some steps forward on that topic.
So is it possible for the Curriculum Subcommittee to meet and then for us to get a final discussion decision on this at our next meeting? I think, you know, Bronwyn makes some good points about this, and it would be useful to know what the timeline is or if this is like, we've got to figure this out right now, which seems not the most ideal way to do this. So Marty, if you don't mind just speaking to that a little bit, and then we'll go to Suzie.
Wonder, Diane, do you know, has the high school notified you when they would have, when their, what their program of studies review schedules?
They have not contacted me, but historically, the program of studies has come at the last meeting in January. But they haven't reached out yet.
So we... Not having Mr. Landers here, I suspect we're looking at a February deadline if I just squeeze this on some of the printing deadlines. But mostly, Landers are accessing the program of studies electronically.
So it sounds like we do have a little bit of time. Suzie, go ahead.
I think my comments speak not only to the curriculum component, but also the policy component, and it stems from this conversation specifically. I agree that there needs to be more opportunities for honors experiences for students throughout the grade levels at the high school. I do believe fundamentally that if we are going to stay true to our goals here, that this requires also a thorough review of the policy around leveling in our district. Because leveling in general is, you know, as much as we try to make it so that students are, have the ability to move in and out of different levels, I, you know, there are some concerning patterns about, you know, course-taking that I think need to be addressed. Part of the reason for my abstention in the previous vote is because I'm concerned that we're putting improvement plans in place without considering the impact of policies on the effectiveness or efficacy of those plans. If we don't really investigate and research what's contributing to certain, you know, patterns of course-taking or course-success or non-success, usually you can look to your policies, which are setting, you know, system-wide expectations, setting things in place where a lack of flexibility really doesn't doesn't allow for a good school improvement plan to take hold. And I think our leveling, our course leveling needs to be looked at significantly in order to allow the improvement plans that the high school's put in place to actually, like, take shape. And I would say the middle school the same. Because we probably have grading policies and leveling policies that are counterintuitive to the plans that have been put together.
Thank you, Suzie. Other, Bronwyn, go ahead.
I definitely agree with Suzie about that, and hopefully that work can start soon. I don't, I don't know if that work needs to be completed before we can put in, say, honors English 11, honors English 12, and the same for Social Studies. Because when I talked to Marty and Tom about it a couple of years ago, the physics class for honors was added with no, with no problem at all. And I just think it's important. We're not giving these students a choice. It's stressful for them, not being able to to have that option that they've had for two years in a row. So some of them feel pressure that they have to go up to AP, even though, even though they might not be ready, maybe taking honors English 11 and then feeling more confident in taking AP as a senior. Just having that option. It's just not fair that we don't have that option. We're one of the only schools of many, many, many programs of studies that I looked at that does not offer this option. It doesn't make any sense. And I just don't think it's fair to the students.
So it sounds to me like there is general agreement that this is something we would like to have happen. And it sounds from Nicole that this is going to be a major item on the next Curriculum Subcommittee meeting. So it sounds to me that we might have movement on this by our next committee meeting. Is that, Marty, can you speak to that?
I think what I would, that's possible, yes. Particularly a Curriculum Sub, I think, in the interim, would be enormously helpful to kind of get a recommendation from that group to bring forward to the wider committee. I think achieving what we're talking about today, there's a few different pathways, right? There's, you could add a level in the way that Bronwyn's talking about, that's sort of adding, at some grade levels, to be adding a fourth level, because you have AP, honors, and then the college prep, and CP1 and CP2. Or perhaps, you know, you're, are you, you know, what would the committee recommend? That we sort of look at collapsing some of those levels or perhaps allowing students to access an honors experience in a college prep class or allowing kids to access an AP experience in an honors class or, you know, something like that. So there's different ways to achieve that. And so I think having a Curriculum Sub between now and your next meeting would be super helpful to give us some sense of what the recommendation of that Subcommittee is, and then we can bring that to the full committee.
Okay. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Or just add honors classes directly into 11 and 12 for those two subjects, like we did. we did with the physics several years ago. Trying to like, w- do all these like different things, like, you know, have them be in one class, but also doing honors at the same time. It just doesn't make any sense. We talked about this four years ago and we're still in the same spot. Um, I know there's been some d- delays, obviously with COVID, but there's been no movement on this. And that's frustrating and I've had teachers, parents and students, um, express, um, that's something that they would like to see. And it, there's no reason for us not to do it. And I don't know why we would have to collapse things if we don't have, if we didn't have to collapse anything for physics in order to make it happen. So.
I, I, I would want the, is the committee, um, supportive of, of add and you're, you're right, Bronwyn, you could do it the, the way you described and I would just, if, if we choose that path, I just wanna know that that, that makes sense to the, you know, that the planning that we bring forward makes sense to the committee if we're, we're adding. Uh, are we, are we looking to add levels? Um, is, is leveling, is additional leveling something that the committee feels they'd like to s- to move forward with or would you rather see, you know, are, are there concerns about the leveling you'd rather see students have? An opportunity to access a learning path regardless of what level they got? I, I think we've had some, there's been, uh, we had a, some conversations about that there, curriculum sub and, and I think even amongst the four or five of us that were there, there was some, there was some different solutions and different ideas.
Uh, let's go to Nicole first and then to Suzie.
I think that before I would want to make any decisions about adding in new things, um, exactly the conversation about leveling is where we left at last. Um, and that's data that I'm expecting to hear at the next curriculum sub is looking at the leveling issue from the middle school through the high school and how that kinda plays out and where we see students most accessing different courses and finding ways to, um, make changes as needed to what we're already seeing with leveling among our classes. Finding creative ways to give students more choice and opportunity without separating them out quite as much. Um, so part of that means having the conversation first about what the data is actually showing us, about where our students are enrolled. Um, it also, some of the other data we were looking at was where we're seeing, um, enrollment with students who are receiving special services, IEP 504, um, accommodations and what enrollment looks like for those students, um, so that we can really examine what the additional, what the additional levels look like on the ground, um, before making a recommendation to the full committee. Um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to finding out more about what that data shows, um, before making any kind of official recommendation for the full committee.
Thank you, Nicole, uh, Suzie and then Gianna.
Yeah, I think, um, it, it's really important to me that the options, that we look at these as options versus looking at them as levels where somebody belongs, right? But I think we have to consider that we're heavy on a couple of options right now, including the fact that we have two CP tracks or two CP levels, right? Um, and we have, and then we have AP in 11th and 12th. It doesn't seem, and I'm gonna reiterate what Bronwyn was saying, it doesn't seem fair that, you know, students can be in an honors, be taking honors classes, maybe some that are honors, some that are not, um, in, in freshman and sophomore year and then just those, those options disappear. None of the other options disappear. I think that's what she's pointing out. And that's the issue is that we, we're, we're missing an opportunity to serve students. So I'm for correcting the current issue, but in the long term, I think as, um, you know, as a committee, as the policy subcommittee, but also as a committee, we need to consider that there maybe needs to be a different way to offer these options to students that, um, doesn't require us to put them in some sort of leveling, um, stratification.
Thank you.
And I'm still not really, I'm still not really, um, clear on why we have two college prep levels.
Thank you, Suzie. Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, yeah, in, in listening to, to Suzie and Bronwyn, um, and Nicole, um, I, I definitely think, you know, moving forward with creating or correcting or presenting the options. But since I wasn't at the last curriculum subcommittee meeting, having recently been re-added, um, I also agree with Nicole, I would, I would like to have a, a, a more, more conversation and learn more, um, about the current situation and kind of the, all of the pieces of the puzzle in working towards, you know, what Bronwyn and Suzie have suggested.
Yeah, and, and I'll just throw in my thoughts on this. Uh, it, it sounds to me like we have two things going on simultaneously. We have a short-term issue. Yeah, just, yeah. So I, I think we have two things going on. We have a short-term issue, which is it'd be great to give the high school kids more options. And to me, this seems like we need to run the experiment. We don't know how many kids would take honors in those two disciplines because we've never offered it to them. And it'd be really nice to know what the, what, what would happen if we gave them that option. Um, so I would love to give them the option, give them the choice. But I think to me, it's a related but different question than the more difficult leveling question. And so I think m- my thought for the curriculum subcommittee is to have those two discussions, knowing that the leveling one is gonna take more than their next meeting. Um, and that's something that will, you know, come to the committee later in the year and even next year. Um, so that's my thinking on this issue and I will happily let Dagan fill us in on his thinking.
All right, so as a high school junior and I, last year as a sophomore, I was offered a placement in both AP lang-, um, yeah, language composition, which is the AP English class and the AP history class. However, I personally, I was one of the students who did not feel comfortable going into that class because, I'm just gonna put myself in check, but my standardized testing scores suck. I'm just not good at it. Some people are good testing, some people aren't. And I thought AP would not be the best for me because personally I was thinking about, well, what's the point taking an AP class if I'm not gonna do well in the AP exam? So I could do what, I, me as a student, I could do well in an honors environment, you know, dealing with the academic rigor of it, but not the AP exam part, which I really feel, and for most students who are taking the AP exam coming up in spring, is kinda the whole point, is you're getting, you're taking the AP exam, you get college credit and all that. So, and I have friends who take honors physics and honors computer science and they're doing very well as opposed to an AP course. And I could say that, you know, I'm curriculum sub, you, hopefully you guys take this up, it's gonna be a great issue, the leveling issue, all of that's great. I do think that adding the honors level at the English and history level would be awesome for students like me who maybe are ready to specifically take on the AP exam and actually deal with the class and subject matter in the, in an honors class. And with that, added into a CP course, which is what I meant, I'm in CP1, both English and history, adding in honors work to the CP1 class doesn't make much sense because half of being in an honors class, not half of it, but a li- a tiny bit is saying that you're in the honors class. You get to say, oh, I took this honors class because you're dealing with the work. So the same thing would go, oh, I'm just doing this honors work, but I'm in a CP1 class. So it's just kinda adding work without title. And we wanna say titles obviously don't really matter, but they kinda do to the student population a little. So that's just one I a- wanna add on that specific subject.
Thank you, Dagan. And, and I'm sure, though you didn't say it, it's also an issue in terms of your weighted GPA and, and those sorts of calculations that factor in an honors class differently than a CP class.
Exactly. The weighted GPA has to do differently with, you know, if you take an honors class than an AP class. So that would definitely have to do something. People are all about their GPA, especially me, I'm the biggest GPA guy out there, watching the points. So I definitely, I feel that and I would definitely appreciate those weighted points.
Suzie, go ahead.
And those kind of policies are, in particular, my point is that, you know, uh, students are focused on their weighted GPA because that's the policy we have, that they get a weighted GPA for the rigor of the course that they take. Um, so they're incented to take the, the advanced placement class even though they don't want to necessarily. Um, and, and it might not fit where they, where their interests lie, it might not fit where, you know, their current performance is. So again, my reiteration that policy needs to be part of this work of reimagining success uh, for the students of Long Meadow.
Thank you, Suzie. Um, Bron- Bronwyn, go ahead.
Um, uh, Dagan, I appreciate your, your input on that. Um, I feel there's other students who feel the same way as you, um, and providing that opportunity is, is the right thing to do. Back to what Kevin was saying before, I, I do think, and I think Suzie's too, it's, it's two separate issues. We're basically looking at potentially adding two courses, one in English, one in social studies for two, you know, 11th and 12th grade versus a leveling system for CP1, CP2, honors at ninth and 10th grade, AP at 10th, 11th and 12th grade for five subjects. So one of the things is gonna be a much smaller, uh, task as, uh, adding the classes as opposed to the leveling discussion, which definitely does need to take place, but that is a way bigger thing. It has impacts all cla- all the subjects, all four years at three different levels. So I personally would like the curriculum subcommittee to take it up as two separate things. And I ju- I just think the leveling one is going to be, um, a much deeper dive and just my opinion.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Anyone else want to weigh in? Marty, do you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, look, so yeah, definitely looking forward to the, um, curriculum subcommittee and then, and then the fuller discussion with the, with the committee here. Um, and just so folks know, uh, anybody watching at home, so we did, we did in the last few years, we added the honors physics class and we added, um, an advanced topics in computer science class, which is an honors class. Um, there are honors options for juniors and seniors in, in math and, um, in all three foreign languages. So, so I wouldn't want, um, I think this is worthy of the curriculum subcommittee's time and I'm looking forward to the full discussion with the committee. I just wouldn't want anyone watching at home to feel like there's, you know, there's no honors options for students when they get to that, when do they get to their junior and senior year. But for sure, you know, looking forward to, again, so coming out of that curriculum subcommittee with, uh, a recommendation, that'd be great.
Thank you, Marty. Uh, are there other comments or questions on the curriculum portion of our school committee goals? Marty, do you mind putting that back up? So I, I'm tempted to move on to our next set of goals, which are policy goals. All right, I'm not seeing any objection to that. All right, so while Marty brings that up, uh, I will read off the policy goals and then we can chat about those. Uh, so support the successful implementation of diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. Support the district's commitment to the health, safety and wellness of each member of the learning community. Support the successful implementation of curriculum, instruction and assessment priorities articulated in the district improvement plan. And again, working through the policy subcommittee. Um, are there comments or questions on the policy goals? Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, yeah, similar to what Suzie was saying, I, I, uh, I definitely want to have a policy subcommittee meeting, um, as soon as possible to start this process of inventorying and maybe highlighting the ones like, uh, Suzie was just mentioning and others have mentioned. Um, and I think it's important to kind of look at them in terms of the categories that are presented here in one, two and three, um, and just kinda get a feel for what, again, currently is available, currently is out there, seeing what needs to be, you know, revisited, um, possibly revised. So I just wanna say that, um, my goal for this particular goal is to make sure that policy subcommittee meets as soon as possible.
Thank you, Gianna. Other comments or questions on the policy goals? Right, I'm not seeing any, so I think that we'll move on to the communication and community relations goals. Um, you can see those up there right now. Uh, so foster communication and collaboration between the committee and the district administrative team by holding joint events at least twice a year, focus on relationship building and the goals of district. Uh, I know we've held one of those, um, and I know that Marty and I can work on making that happen a second time because I know how much we appreciate doing those things. Um, school committee will welcome students and educators from the district to showcase student work that represents a vision of the graduate, civic involvement projects and other district initiatives and goals. And, and I know that we're all thrilled that that is happening. Um, and we had a, a great video today on the vision of the graduate and we've had students present at, at previous meetings and I know we're gonna work hard to keep that going because I know that, um, we all know how, how important that is. Um, three, the school committee will communicate monthly with parents, caregivers and the community via links to the minutes of the committee meetings and links to recordings of the school committee meetings. Four, the school committee will work, collaborate with community stakeholders on the implementation of the recommendations of the equity audit conducted by the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. Do we have comments or questions on those goals? Uh, I'll do Bronwyn first and then Gianna.
Um, I was wondering, um, if, I think it's just, it's something we've talked about other years, I just don't think it's something that we, um, talked about or pinned down this year. But we have had some people, uh, some guests, speakers and also some, um, people express in their emails that they're not getting responses. But I don't, I just wanna make sure, so sometimes it's, in the past, it's been, um, like a certain person will respond or other people won't respond and we can't respond to everybody because, um, then it would be a discussion. So I'm wondering if we can just clear that up so that people do get responses. Um, obviously we, we can't answer every single question, uh, perfectly. Uh, and sometimes, uh, we can, I don't know. I just feel like the, some of the feedback we've gotten from the community has been that they're not feeling like they're being heard or they're not getting anything back. And I just think we need to figure out the, the process for that for this year.
So let, let me speak to that and then I will give it over to Nicole who can take it from her perspective. Um, my understanding of our policy on the committee is that the, uh, the clerk will acknowledge receipt of every email that we get so that everybody gets a response that says, we, we have received this, it is entered into our record. So that's number one. And then number two, I know that Marty follows up with many of the folks personally who write emails to us. So I would love to hear from Nicole and Marty just to clarify what I think is going on. So we'll go to Nicole first.
You said exactly what is going on. All emails get a response, usually from me, a response that is the acknowledgement of receipt that we have discussed as a committee is sort of the approved committee response, acknowledging receipt of each email. The only times that I do not send that email is when I have been beaten to the punch by Dr. O'Shea, who sometimes sends his own email in response. And in his email, if he says that we acknowledge receipt of this as the school committee and it will be entered officially, then I do not repeat that. If he responds to the person and does not mention that, then I also follow up with another email that lets them know that it has been received by all of us and that we acknowledge receipt of it.
Thank you, Nicole. Marty, do you want to just expand on, on how you respond to those emails?
Yeah, I would, I think you characterized it correctly, as did Nicole. And, and I think what, what folks need to understand is that deliberations of the committee have to happen in, in open sessions. So, you know, while, so the, the committee cannot sort of respond as a group to a particular email, sometimes the best that can be done is simply to say, thank you very much. It's been entered as public correspondence. And I, I can say with certainty that the emails that we receive for sure shape the agendas and the discussions and the decisions that you're making as a committee. So I'll do my, if it's sort of just some operational information that a community member needs, I'll do my best to respond, but obviously I can't speak for the committee as well. So, you know, it's, it's a, I think we, and then no doubt the volume of emails that we've gotten at different times over the last couple of years has been, has been significant. So just kind of keeping up with that is a challenge as well.
And I also want to acknowledge that, that Marty often reaches out to folks who send us emails for a phone conversation. And I know that Marty has many of those phone conversations that, that some community members might not know is going on. And I know Marty is always willing to have those conversations. And I think, you know, that we are especially thankful that Marty does that. And so I think that's important too. So Bronwyn, I think that the question is a really good one and I think it's important for us to remind folks how all of that works. So Bronwyn, does, does that answer the, the question in a way that you think makes sense to, to you and to folks who might be listening?
That definitely helps knowing that Nicole sends that out. And I know that Marty follows up on, on certain ones through email, on other ones through the phone calls. I don't, I don't know if all, all of them get followed up on because some of them might be phone calls, some of them might be an email. But I, I can understand where some of the guest speakers who have also emailed us are coming from when they say, you know, I've asked this question, you know, four times or I've asked this and I still haven't gotten an answer. And that, those are the constituents and I, I don't, I, I don't know if we can figure out a better way to, I know we can't answer every single question in every single email, but somehow figure out a better way to let the constituents and stakeholders know that, you know, we are interested in their questions and we're also interested in, in answering their questions. In the past, it's been, and I, I think this is still the case, that like I wouldn't respond to a parent guardian, whatever email, like just myself because I'm not, I, I can't speak for the whole committee. So that's why I don't respond. I, I assume other people don't. Is that accurate that we're not supposed to do that? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I think it's important that the people who email and our guest speakers know that, that it's, it's not, it's not the policy. And that's why we, we don't answer. But I wish there was a, I guess I wish there was a better way that people felt like we were responding, not by just saying, you know, we got your email and it'll be entered in the correspondence and then their name gets read at, at the next meeting.
So Bronwyn, can I just respond to one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Any committee member is perfectly within their rights to reply to any email that they get as long as they say, I am not speaking for the committee, I am speaking for myself. So anybody on this committee should feel completely within our policy, our rights, ethical guidelines, whatever, to reply for themselves to any email that we get. So nobody should feel like they are not able to do that in their role as a committee member. The only thing they can't do is speak for the committee and we also can't reply all to that because then we're violating open committee laws. But if anybody wants to respond one-on-one, that's perfectly acceptable. Suzie, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, and I think that's, that's obviously the rub, right? Like if, you can't guarantee to the people who are writing, you can't guarantee that one person's response to them is the, is the answer of the committee. So therefore, you know, since we cannot engage, it's, it's actually like violation of public, open meeting laws to engage in any kind of email deliberation with the whole committee, then it seems, you know, difficult to, I, I will say honestly, it's, it's a very rare occasion where I respond individually to someone. And it's typically if there's been, if, if I'm named in an email specifically, then I might respond to them. But other than that, I, I feel that you tread, even if you say I'm not speaking for the committee, I feel you, we still hold that position, which is, it's, so it's a difficult kind of situation to extricate yourself from the school committee, but you're still representing the school committee, right? So I think it's always, you know, important. I, I do think that perhaps one of the, if, if there's something that, you know, Dr. O'Shea doesn't feel comfortable responding to because it is specifically directed at the school committee, that those could be, you know, formed into agenda conversations if they need to be. But, you know, really unless it's something that Dr. O'Shea cannot answer, really, you know, him being the voice of the district as the superintendent makes the most sense for response in most cases. But if we're, if we're dealing with that issue specifically that someone asks, that can't be, that Dr. O'Shea needs to bring to us, absolutely, we should be deliberating over it in public.
Yeah, thank you, Suzie. And Gianna, just one, one sec. I just want to follow up on Suzie's comment and what Marty said, which is that when Marty and I have our, our weekly discussion, so as, you know, superintendent and chair of the committee, we talk about the, the public correspondence that we get. And I second what Marty already said, which is those emails shape our agenda setting. And I also want to just remind committee members, if there's something that comes up in an email that you want on the agenda, send it to me, send it to Marty. Any committee member is well within their rights to say to me or Marty, I would like this topic on a future agenda. And, and again, don't hesitate to do that. That's part of our role. Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, Bronwyn, thanks for bringing this up. I, this is, when I first started on the committee, this was, this was a, a challenge or concern. I'll speak for myself. And I remember we had the conversation and so I would draw people's attention to number three. The school committee will communicate monthly with parents and caregivers. We, I remember the conversation and we did that because it's hard sometimes to expect parents and families and caregivers to attend each of our meetings, which can sometimes be three hours long. Our last one was like three and a half hours long. And so we were, we were doing this monthly right before the pandemic. And I know that because I had picked, we had all signed up for a month and I had picked March 2020 thinking what could be going on in March 2020. And I decided it would be a boring month and then it was the pandemic. So I think this could help if we get back to that system of a template of communicating. We had like, you know, I don't know if we were doing the minutes. We had links to the meeting videos. And I think it would go a long way in helping people realize that maybe we had talked about something that they were having questions on. And, you know, if they could see it bulleted or if they could see it in the agenda. Because that's another concern. It's very hard to find the agenda on the Long Meadow site. I've had people send me texts or call me and say, hey, where's the agenda? And it takes me a little while myself. So I think we were doing this to make it as easy as possible for people to be aware of what was happening at the meetings. And I, I do think sometimes to Bronwyn's point, you know, it's not just about us saying, we got your email, but that we actually, you know, digested the information and are considering it or thinking about it. And again, I think if we can get back to the monthly communication in a, you know, again, a templated or organized or structured manner so that people knew exactly where to look for the information about the meetings. And then they would know, okay, they already talked about that. Now let me ask some more questions if I don't, if I go and look at the, the minutes or whatever. I do remember very specifically those conversations though because Bronwyn's question was one that I had originally coming onto the committee. Because I remember sending letters to the committee myself and thinking, what the heck? Where did my letter go? So for whatever that's worth, I think if we take a look at number three and kind of figure that out, it might be helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Gianna. And I guess my, my suggestion on that is I don't want to add any more work to anyone's plate who is on this committee. Everybody is very busy with subcommittee assignments and other things. I'm just curious if it's possible that when the principals send out their messages, they could just put the links to the minutes and to the recordings in the messages they send out. I, I don't know if that's asking too much. They're already communicating with their families. Marty, is it possible to do that? That seems to me like a very low, low energy, low stress way to just get those links out there and then people can engage as they would like. So Marty, do you mind speaking to that?
Yep, definitely doable. You know, the principals have different cycles to their communication. Some send a weekly, some send, the high school has a more ambitious newsletter. But all the principals are regularly sending out mass emails to their, to their families. So we can, we can certainly do that.
Gianna, Bronwyn, others, does that address that point? I mean, I think that's what we're getting at in number three. Does that make sense? I will take silences, yes.
I, I think that we, I think that would be helpful. I mean, one thing is, I guess time for everybody is, is tricky. So them, us sending them the meeting minutes, the meeting minutes are really only things that we voted on. They're not like a, you know, like a, like being in court or something where you have every single thing that's said. And then also we could be sending them a link for meeting minutes, a, a meeting that lasted three hours. And for them to try to go to the spot where they think we may have addressed their, their concerns is tricky. But I do think it's, that would be, that would be helpful moving forward if the administrators could, could add that, those two links.
Yeah, and just to follow up on one other thing, I mean, if we could somehow, I mean, if this is a template that the principals are sending out, if they could add in there and this is how you get to agendas, that would be really helpful too. And if it's like a multi-step process to just outline, this is how you get to agendas. Because I do think it's a little frustrating. We have to vote on the minutes and so sometimes you don't get the minutes until a month after the meeting. And it, you might, you might be a little frustrated and you want to know what's on the agenda. So if, if that were possible to template, I'm imagining it is the same thing in every message and you just then have the links that you click on. So Marty, if that's possible, maybe it's those three things. The link to the agenda and maybe some instructions, link to the minutes and link to the recordings. Gianna, go ahead.
Yeah, that's essentially what we were doing. We had been doing this for a couple of months before the pandemic. And that's, that's exactly what it was. They just embedded it right into the bottom of their, again, weekly, bi-weekly, whatever, you know, timeframe that they had. And with regard to, you know, people having to take the time to go in, you know, if they decide to go and look at the video, like I get all that and that's why I was talking about it in the first place. We can't have that expectation. But I think the, and I hear you, on minutes come out, you know, a month after, you know, relatively speaking, a month after, they might have been, you know, discussed. That's why I think the agenda is also important as well because they're pretty, I hear you Bronwyn, but I, I think the minutes are pretty detailed in terms of bigger picture items. I think the agendas are definitely detailed enough that if you were interested in talking about curriculum or honors classes or masking, they would have a good idea that it was going to be discussed. So I thank everybody for that. I just think it's an important thing to even try because we were trying it and I feel like it was helpful.
Yeah, and as far as watching the, the meetings go, I'm sure they could take a clue from their students who will show them how they can watch it a double, quadruple, 10 times. And you can, you know, get these things down into a manageable, manageable size. Marty, on, on number four, the, you know, working collaboratively with community stakeholders, I know that was related to the task force or I forget the right name that you were putting together. And, and maybe this is a good time for you to just update us on, on how that's going. And again, I know COVID has derailed a whole bunch of stuff. But if you can just give us an update on that, that I think would be, would be useful.
So yeah, COVID has derailed a lot of things, honestly. We've been probably 90% of our work has been involved with this over the last month or so. So we, Suber Tran and I did sit down and, and rough out a process to identify some folks to be on the, what we're calling an advisory council. And so I'm sure within a month or so, we'll, we'll have that in its formative stages.
Thank you for the update. Other comments or questions on our communication goals? All right, let's move on to the fiscal goals. And again, working through the finance subcommittee, maintain focus on well-resourced schools and fiscal responsibility. Committee will implement multi-tiered systems of support. Outcomes related to diversity, equity and inclusion. Prioritize and support the health and safety of each member of the learning community and negotiate in good faith to develop a mutually acceptable and fiscally responsible contract with L E A. And all of that is up there for you to see. Are there comments or questions on our fiscal goals? Gianna?
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, so I remember this was a discussion too about moving the, the bullets and, and the wording. There's just, just some, a couple of grammatical things. I don't know if it's, I mean, they're grammatical, but they make a difference in how you read it. I don't know if it's okay to...
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't think we're wordsmithing the document, right? Like this is, this is the document. We're not, are you talking about like trying to revise this?
I'm just talking about adding a couple of words that make the sentences.
But I think like we've already voted on this, like it is what it is. So I think we should speak to the spirit of what these things mean. If we don't like the grammar, like that ship has sailed, in my opinion.
Because we were fixing it as we were doing it, it wasn't approved. Okay, that's okay.
Other comments or questions on the fiscal goals? And I know we are going to hear a lot from the finance subcommittee and Tom Maza over the coming months. Any other thoughts on the school committee goals? All right, so I think we can stop sharing the screen, Marty. I think, I, I would just say, you know, I really appreciate everybody. you know, I really appreciate everybody, you know, your, your good thoughts and good thinking and comments on, on our goals. I mean, I think it's important, A, that we have goals, and B, that we actually revisit them and talk about them and see how we're, we're progressing toward them. And I think this was a really useful discussion. And these are the sorts of discussions we should be having. So thank you to everybody for, for this, yeah, excellent discussion. Right, so I think we're going to move on, if that's okay with everybody. Right, excellent. Let me get back to the annotated agenda. Give me a sec. All right, it looks to me like our next item is school physician. I will let Marty handle that agenda.
Thank you. So we had, thank you to Nicole Crenier for joining me and Dr. Tapper to work on identifying a candidate to bring forward to you as a consulting physician to the district. We'll need some additional time to finalize our recommendation. I expect that we will have that ready to go for the next meeting. So if you could ask me to table that, that would be helpful.
All right, that seems completely reasonable. Any comments or questions on tabling that? I assume we'll take it up at our next meeting. Great, all right. Next up is the 2022-23 school count.
Okay, thank you. So in your, in your meeting packet, it is a proposal for a calendar for the academic year 2022, 2023. This calendar includes five professional development days, 180 school days. It would have, first day of school occur on August 29th. It would have the last day of school occur on June 14th. And this comes to you, recommended by the, unanimously recommended by the calendar committee. And just kind of note that the, some of the provisions of the approval of the calendar, the development and approval of the calendar, and some of the, some of the items that have to be in that school calendar are provided for in the, in the unit A contract. So this 2022-2023 calendar is for you for your review and potential approval.
Marty, can you remind us who is on the calendar committee?
Sure. It's a, it consists of a team of administrators and unit A employees for the unit A contract. So specifically, it's a joint committee of nine teachers and nine administrators. And those administrators are appointed by the superintendent. Our obligation is to meet and establish a calendar no later than January 7th for approval by the committee, or by March 1st of that same year for the following academic year.
Thank you. And just to highlight some things that have come up in the past on the committee, I just want to make sure we're clear on. I know we've talked some about changing vacations, you know, there was a discussion about, should we have just a March vacation and not a February and an April vacation? And Marty, again, if you could just remind us, my understanding is, based on the current contract we have, that is not possible, and that's something that might be possible in future contracts. Can you just speak to that a little bit? Because I know that's something that's come up in the past.
Certainly, everything's possible via, you know, conversations with the LEA and potential MOUs. The current contract states that, makes reference to a, a winter and a spring vacation. The winter vacation year period is defined as being scheduled for the week during which Washington's birthday holiday is observed. The spring vacation period is defined as being scheduled for the week during which Patriots Day, the Patriots Day holiday is observed. So it would be that if we, essentially, if we wanted to make any adjustment to, to that, particularly with regard to vacation, we would need to engage the LEA, you know, through collective bargaining.
Thank you for clarifying that, Marty. Comments or questions on the proposed calendar? There is a possible motion?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent and the calendar committee that the school committee approve the 2022-2023 school year calendar as presented on the calendar date of January 11th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Nicole?
I just have a quick question. I noticed a change from previous year, well, this, just this previous year, that it looks like the 23rd of December would be a full day, whereas this past year, I think that was a no-school day. I'm just curious what led to the swap there.
Yeah, that was probably the, the last and most critical part of our discussion. So it's, it's, it's interesting that you zeroed in on that. The feeling was that if we did not have school that day, it would push the end of the school year to June 15th, which in turn, if we had sort of a typical number of snow days, it would push us into that fourth week of June, maybe June 20th, 21st, or 22nd. So that was, you know, we had quite a bit of conversation around whether or not 23rd ought to be a, a non-school day. And this committee felt that it ought to be a non-school day then. I think the process is we would bring it back to the calendar committee. Is that, is that correct, Diane? I see it, I guess, yeah.
Thank you. I think that, especially knowing that that fourth week in June is preceded by a long weekend for Juneteenth, adds some clarity to that for sure.
Thank you. Bronwyn, go ahead. Bronwyn, you're muted right now.
Thanks. Just to follow up on Nicole's question, I know in the past also, frequently, the 23rd has been a half-day. I was just wondering if that was...
So that, to make that a half-day, that would have to be a decision of the school committee, because by contract, I'm going to Mr. Mazza, that our feeling was that he didn't have the authority to make that a half-day of school. That if we were to make that a half-day of school, or reducing the workday perhaps by a half a day, that that would be something, again, that we would have to bring to the committee and have the committee, you know, we'd have to sit down with the LEA to negotiate that. It is true that there have been years in, in the past where it has been a half-day. But I think the proper way to do that, if we were to make it a half-day, would be to, again, go through the collective bargaining process, because right now, the way the work year is defined, it wouldn't allow us as a calendar committee to make that a half-day of school, or a half a workday perhaps.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
Yeah. I'm looking at Mr. Mazza, I don't know if there's, if there's a better way to clarify that, if I'm saying that.
Yeah, I think Marty's referring to the workday for the employees. The calendar committee wouldn't have the authority to reduce the work year of staff based on changing the calendar. I suppose you could make it a school, half a school day, but it would still be a full workday for employees. So that's kind of why I think we've ended on the proposal you have tonight.
Any other comments or questions? We will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right. I think that brings us to a possible motion for executive session, if I'm reading the agenda correctly.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining units with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H. And purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to not reconvene into open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Then we will vote. Nicole?
Yes, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Gianna? Susie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you to everyone for attending the meeting. We are now moving to executive session. Have a lovely night, and we will see you in two weeks.